This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the Village Board meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our minute in women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number five, action on the minutes for the open and close session from July 25th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda, must state your name and address, limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Is there anybody who'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? I don't see anybody. There's nobody online, so we're moving on. Number seven, written communications or announcements. I have a couple announcements that I would like to make. Number one, the boys' baseball, who've been playing together for quite a number of years, just a couple weeks ago, they won the State Legion Tournament at Ashwabenon Park, which we hosted. And that's pretty much the same team that Trustee Krieger coached in the high school baseball, coached them to the FRCC title twice. So, just a really proud moment for the community. I think it's just a great thing, and their coach, Jason Fonder, brought the trophy here, and I want to thank you for that, and enjoy it, and I'm sure you will. So, that's all I wanted to say, is that that's number one I want to talk about. Number two, the Green Bay Rockers won the Northwoods League title. They are based here in Ashwabenon at Capital Credit Union Park. That is, they haven't made the playoffs since 2008. They've never won the title, so that again is exciting, just again, some great community time. And then also, our Rush Expo won a merit award for the AI A Wisconsin Award for Design. So, that is a pretty big moment for them to win that also. So, that's all I have for announcements. Does anybody have anything? Okay. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Eight A, action on change of agent Marcus Cinemas of Wisconsin LLC, DBA Bay Park Cinema, Mark Anthony Peterson, Sr. B, budgeted expenditures. C, 2023 year-to-date general fund financial report as of 8/16/23. Investment report, park, rec, and forestry department reports, and Public Works monthly department reports. Does anybody want anything pulled that they have questions on, or I need a motion to approve?
Move to approve. There's no questions.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine A, public hearing regarding requested PUD amendment number 08-1-23 for Ash Investors LLC, 2325 Holmgren Way, parcel VA-116-8-1. This is a public hearing for this item. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this item? Erin, did you want to explain it now at the public hearing?
Sure, certainly, I can do that. The requested PUD amendment is to allow for a reduced setback at an existing planned unit development at 2325 and 2351 Holmgren Way. This would include the property just to the north of the Epic Event Center and including the strip mall, that'd be just to the west of it. The proposed PUD amendment would allow for a reduced setback on Cormier Road for a proposed Lot 2. There's a certified survey map that was recommended for approval conditioned upon the PUD approval by the Plan Commission earlier this month. The typical front requirement in the B3 Community Business District is 100 feet. The requested PUD amendment would reduce that down to 61 feet to allow for the split of the property and the redevelopment of the strip mall for a new business on the end cap.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this item at the public hearing? Hearing nobody out there, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Show move.
Second.
A motion and a second to close a public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten, action items. Ten A, action regarding requested PUD amendment ordinance number 08-1-23 for Ash Investors LLC, 2325 and 2351 Holmgren Way, parcel VA-116-8-1. Okay? Any questions for Erin? We just had the public hearing.
I just have a quick question, Erin. The 61 feet would only be for this particular parcel. It would not be for parcels in the future going on to Cormier, correct? They would still have to comply with the 100-foot.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know what they're planning on doing with this lot, Erin?
The vacant lot is still planned to be vacant. The Lot 1, so the front half where the strip mall is.
Yep.
That's proposed to be a new, it's called Lombardi Brew House, a new brewery restaurant proposed to go in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve Item A, Ash Investments, 2325, 2351 Holmgren Way, parcel VA-116-8-1.
Second.
We have a motion and approve, and a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 08-1-23. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten C, action on Class B Beer License Request for 608 Axe Throwing LLC, DBA, 608 Axe Throwing.
You must be.
You must be.
Oh, I skipped, I'm sorry. Ten B, action on special event application for the Bellin Women's Half Marathon Road Closure. Chris?
So, a request has been made for approval of the Bellin Women's Half Marathon Broadway Street Road closure because of the special event policy that we have now. We need the board's approval to close the road.
This is, this has happened, what did they say, Joel, like, for the last 10 years?
Correct. This is the same route, same organizing group for many years that has organized this event, so no changes from the, from previous years.
Okay.
Move to approve the special event application for the Bellin Women's Half Marathon Road Closure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special event application for Bellin Women's Half Marathon Road Closure. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Now, ten C, action on Class B Beer License Request for 608 Axe Throwing LLC, DBA, 608 Axe Throwing. Chris?
So, this axe-throwing company is taking over where Blades &amp; Boards was in Bay Park Square, and they're requesting the same, same type of license, the Class B Beer License, and this was approved unanimously at Public Works and Protection.
Has there been any issues with them? Because I remember when we first did this with the Blades &amp; Boards, we had some concerns. Has there been any issues that anybody's aware of?
I don't.
No, we asked the same question as at Public Works. There was no concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
Hearing that, I will make a motion to approve the Beer License for 608 Axe Throwing LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Class B Beer License Request for 608 Axe Throwing LLC. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
No.
Tracy, no?
No.
Okay, so we have one no. Ten D, action on Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License Request for SBG Apple North IV LLC, Doing Business As, Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar. Chris?
So, this came before the Public Works and Protection Committee meeting as SBG Apple North I LLC. And in the meantime, they had to make the change to a different LLC name. Everything else stayed the same. The officers, just everything stayed the same except the name. So, tonight, I'm asking that you would approve the SBG Apple North IV LLC, Doing Business As, Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar.
I know I met with you, Chris, on this one, but the name on there is what is on our sheet here. Is that the way it's going to be?
The cover sheet, yes. That's the new one.
Okay, that's the correct name.
Yep.
Okay. No other questions, I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License for SBG Apple North IV LLC. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten E, action on Class A Beer, Class A Liquor License Request for J Squared Capital LLC, DBA Ridgeview Liquor.
Mary, I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion or vote on this item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this, this J Squared Capital LLC is also going to be called Ridgeview Liquor, and they are asking for the exact same license, a Class A Beer, a Class A Liquor, and this will be contingent upon surrender of the existing license at 2202 South Ridge Road. And they are here to speak also.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for anybody, or?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Class A Beer, Class A Liquor License Request for J Squared Capital, DBA Ridgeview Liquor. Hearing no other questions?
I got one.
What's that?
I just hope they continue the service that was provided in the past at that place.
They were, they were handpicked, Gary. They were handpicked.
They're big shoes to fill, though.
Yep, big shoes to fill.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten F, action on Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License Request for La La's Cafe and Catering, DBA La La's Cafe and Catering. Chris?
So, La La's Cafe and Catering is requesting a Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License for the old T-Bakens. T-Bakens had a Class B Beer, Class B Wine License. So, just so you're aware that, that what they're asking for is more than what was there before, and they are here in attendance to speak if you have any questions.
So, if they're asking for more, explain exactly what the difference is between the two.
So, T-Bakens had beer and wine, and then they're requesting beer, wine, and alcohol, the whole, everything.
Okay.
Everything.
We, we denied their request at Public Works because it's like our last full Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License available, and when T-Bakens applied, I wasn't on the board at that time, but I, I understand that they denied it because they are worried about the size of the place. It's a very small place with not a lot of seating, and they were just worried that they wouldn't be able to generate enough revenue to give them a full Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License. So, at Public Works, we moved to deny their request for the Class B Beer, Class B Liquor, but to grant a Class B Beer, class, is it Class C wine? So, that's what we, that's what we did at Public Works.
So, if they chose to do that, Patrick, would they do two motions?
They would follow the same procedure as you did at Public Works.
Okay.
So, the license they're requesting falls under that, the license that we are allocated, right?
So, is it a Class B Beer and a Class C wine, or just a Class C wine?
It's beer, Class B Beer and wine.
Yeah. Well, I would move to deny the request for a Class B Beer, Class B Liquor, but grant them a Class B Beer, Class C Wine License.
Second.
Okay. We can do that in one motion, Patrick?
That's.
Okay. So, we have a denial for the Class B Beer, Class B Liquor, but granting a Class B Beer and Class C Wine. Okay?
And that's what, that's exactly what T-Bakens had.
Correct.
Same thing.
Yep. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten G, consolidate employee retirement fund to general fund. Greg?
So, as you may be aware, we currently have a fund on our financials that holds dollars for future employee retirements. Those would be employees that retire that have accumulated earned accruals, and they get paid out upon their retirement. What, what I'm looking to do here is, is really more of an accounting exercise, but just wanted to run it by the board. So, take that fund, consolidate it away, and merge it in with the general fund, and here's the reasons why. Since we went to Baker Tilly a couple years ago, they have kind of questioned this, you know, what this fund is for, why is it a special revenue fund? Because it really doesn't technically meet the definition of special revenue, because the revenue going in there is typically tax levy dollars. So, what they do, have been doing on the financials at the end of the year, is they merge it in with the general fund. So, anybody that looks at our budget document, and then they look in the financials, you're not going to find this employee retirement fund in our, in our audited financial statements. You're not going to find that fund. So, what we've talked, I've talked to them about it. What they recommended is, hey, why don't you just create a restricted cash account, restricted reserve account? Everything acts exactly the same. So, when we put money into that fund, the purpose, usually at the end of the year, if we have excess funds, or we've, actually, we started it back when we closed TIF 2, that's when we actually created it. We took a chunk of that money and put it in there. That's its designated purpose, can't be used for anything else unless the board were to determine that they wanted to use it for something else, because the funds going in are tax levy dollars, they're not some grant or something that they're predefined. So, ultimately, we would still do the same process each year, review what we have, review the balance, review retirements coming up through the budget process, but in this case, it would just be coming out of a reserve account, kind of a fund balance, if you will, a separate fund balance within. And again, at the same time, money can be put in there. We would pay out future retirements out of that restricted cash account, and then also the board would always have the ability to, to take board action to move it for other purposes if, if so desired. So, at the end of the day, what we're looking to do is just close the fund. It's basically three journal entries to move all the money into different accounts within the, the general fund, and, and the purpose of employee retirements would stay exactly the same. It's just really kind of a cleanup of an accounting exercise, so that now, going forward, our budgeting documents and our financial, you know, audited statements are matching in that regard. And then during the budget, what I would do is, I'll be presenting more of a page that breaks down our fund balance, so you can see those dollars and see how it's, how our fund balance is being allocated between restricted and non-restricted activity.
Are there any questions? This did go to finance and personnel also.
Whether they need approval or just information?
Approval, please.
Yes.
Approval you need, all right, I'll move to approve the consolidate on employment retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consolidation of the employee retirement fund to the general fund. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten H, 2024 budget update. Greg?
So, part of the timeline that went to the board back in July was to provide an update in August to where we're at. We're at the very, very, very beginning stages of the budget process, so much as yesterday was a kickoff meeting to the staff, so they have started today to start, generate basically their operational budgets. Wanted to just touch base on a few things that we're looking at preliminarily. The timeline all stays the same, trying to understand some of our key priorities. Right now, there's a lot of moving parts. We have a market revaluation going on, which will potentially increase market values over 10%, 15%. We typically will try to reduce a tax rate to kind of offset that increase in valuation the best that we can, but it still is really early. We have some preliminary numbers. The goal right now is to be pretty much close to 100% between the equalized and assessed value, that they'll be equal, but we won't know that final, final number till, I think it's late October, to be quite honest with you. They usually have a good estimate, but that's when we'll get that final number. So, what the tax rate will be, will be potentially considerably lower because of that. We have levy limits that they're kicking in place as well. We did get additional shared revenues, which I think many of you are aware of, so we're working that in there. And then, of course, as we go through the budget process, any capital needs, we're improving our capital improvement plan, so a lot of the staff is going through, they're kind of cleaning house, going through all of our inventory, all of our vehicles. We are at a bit of a breaking point with vehicles, over the years of pushing off, pushing off, pushing off, so we may see a little bit larger increase in, in vehicle needs, and I know that's kind of ongoing all throughout the year because of how the buying process has been going. And then, you know, there's health insurance costs. We don't have the final numbers from the state yet for the, or excuse me, for the WRS rates. Hopefully, that doesn't change too much. And then we're reviewing internally health insurance and what we're going to do with that plan. We're meeting, we've met, we'll meet again in September to go over any changes to that plan as well. So, the goal is obviously to have a balanced budget. The goal is to continue to provide all of the services that we have, and then continue to address future needs within the village, different areas, constantly growing. We are not only growing in activities, but we're growing up in, in building space, and so, take across the street, for example, you've got the change over the last 10 years. Everything's going up, which increases the amount of inspections, increases a lot of the workload, the policing, all those efforts. So, looking at the whole budget every year, we do a great job, staff does a great job of looking at what their needs are and not their wishes, per se, but we do try to break in some of the wishes as well, the best we can. So, I don't know if Joel wants to add anything else as far as strategic planning and goals?
Yeah, I'll just add, and maybe seek some discussion from the board, just to reiterate kind of what Greg is talking about. We're in very good financial position for our municipality. We have a couple of factors that are going into the budget process that we need to take into consideration. As Greg had mentioned, we are going through a market adjustment on all real properties in the village of Ashwabenon, not only single-family residential homes, but commercial properties as well. And we anticipate that that increase in value is going to be pretty substantial. If you recall, our ratio was about 12% under equalized value, and that was based on last year's numbers. So, somewhere between 12 and what could be up to 20% change in assessed value to match the equalized value of the village, that will have a substantial effect on the actual tax rate, decreasing it, although individual properties will increase in value, and so their, their tax burden, if you will, based on the levy, could change as well. If you recall, a few years back, 23, I think it was 3 now, it would be, we did a revaluation on residential properties, but we kept commercial properties flat. So, now, commercial properties will be brought up to full market value, so that should hopefully balance some of those challenges that maybe single-family or residential properties we're facing. So, we're mindful of that. We had about 2.8% net new construction, so that will have a substantial impact on the amount of levy we can increase for those new taxpayers, if you will, or the new value that comes into the community, and so that will provide some additional levies. And as Greg had mentioned, we anticipate having just over $400,000 of additional state aids come to the village to support our operating dollars. So, the, the key things that Greg had mentioned is, obviously, we're, we're balancing our employee costs. That's our largest cost center, if you will, if you want to look at it that way, wages, benefits, that type of thing. So, the board and committees have looked at our wage scales and have tentatively given us kind of that green light to use that for the budget purposes, so we're working through that. We do anticipate some increases in health and dental costs. I think it was around 5% in total is kind of the preliminary number that we're looking at, which is certainly, you know, not ideal, but in the past, it's been anywhere from 10% to 15%. So, 5% is still a fairly conservative number. Beyond that, there will likely be some requests for, for additional positions within departments just to continue to meet that increasing demand of service, whether it's in public safety or code enforcement, things of that nature. So, we do anticipate those requests coming in and doing our best to identify those areas for the board. In addition to that, I'll mention that we do anticipate a number of retirements next year, and as we talked in the previous agenda item, that will have an impact on our Retirement Service Fund, our allocated retirement funds. And so, we, we just want to be best prepared for that, because that will require some attrition, some turnover, solicitation and recruitment for new individuals, and maybe an opportunity for us to rethink how we serve, serve the, the community and the organization. So, with that, what we kind of wanted from the board tonight is, continue as you have in the past in preparing the budget, present that to us later on in October and November so that we can deliberate over it, or if you have some very specific, high-level, without going into too many weeds tonight, so a 30,000 to 60,000-foot overview of like what the priorities are, would be welcome to, to hear those, so that as department heads are preparing their budgets, we know what we're working for.
Joel, I would say that the, let's face it, the biggest, biggest number is in the personnel. I would be asking, you know, everybody out there, you know, are we, do we have the right amount of personnel? Do we, do we need additional personnel? Do we need to shift personnel in other areas? And what's the impact of that upon the budget? And I think it would be great for us to see some scenarios put together, not just, here's what, but here's multiple scenarios, and have the department heads kind of look at it as far as, okay, look, we, we need a couple more people, but how is that look? How can we make that look? And maybe some shared resources between departments, maybe something, you know, I don't know what it is, but I think the more scenarios that you can give us, and I'm not asking for a dozen, but if we have, you know, two, three different scenarios, that would really, I think, help the board understand the biggest budget item that's out there, which is always the salaries and the payroll. That would, that would be my thought.
The other thing I've been getting more context lately, I don't know if because the weather's been nicer, but in regard to the condition of our sidewalks and the condition of our trails, and speaking with Brian, we've budgeted in the past like $1,500 on a regular basis for repair of sidewalks, and I think that's something we need to look at in two more. The one that someone who reached out was Cormier, and the condition of that sidewalk on the north, which is in bad shape, and maybe it's looking at it in the capital budget rather than a maintenance item, but I think those are things we need to consider. We put a lot of money away for our roads, and we are really good about keeping those up and, you know, regularly addressing them, but I think with our trails and our sidewalks, we need to kind of keep that same philosophy or look at maybe keeping that same philosophy so they stay in a good state of repair, just like our roads do. So, just something to think about and see, you know, where we could do that. Maybe there's grants, maybe there's other things to look at to try to keep on top of that as well.
I know that in the, in the budget, the high-level meetings that we've had already, there's personnel requests in there, so we do need to add personnel, so.
I'll touch on Tracy's comment really quickly, because I think Greg mentioned it in his, in his cover memo. We are working, our department heads are working diligently and putting together a five-year capital improvement plan that, to a certain extent, is kind of a novel idea, I think, for the village. We've had capital improvement plans, but they've been kind of singular use, meaning a department has a capital improvement plan, a very good, robust plan that extends well beyond five years, but we've never had the opportunity to.
to bring those plans together into a singular document, if you will, or plan, and then allow our opportunity to prioritize which projects should be funded, supported, and conducted. So the, the comment that Tracy made regarding sidewalks, our Bike and Pet Committee is working on kind of prioritizing those projects, and they would be included into that CIP, much like you would see road projects, capital equipment purchases, so on and so forth. So certainly on our way towards that, and that would, would be an expectation for staff to be able to present that to the board as part of the budget process as well.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about that at our last Bike and Pet, and I think it's great that we're doing that process and, and bringing those forth as well. So I appreciate staff working on that.
So Brett, I just wanted you to know that your license will be ready afternoon tomorrow for pickup, so you don't have to stay any longer if you don't want. And then, Rich of you, Licker, yours will be ready once we get the surrender of the license, when you're ready, okay? So I didn't want you guys to think you had to sit here.
I was going to say, there's nothing more entertaining than watching one of these village board meetings, so you're welcome to stay, too.
You can even replay it if you want.
Okay. Thank you for the great budget update. 10I, action on public works 2024-2025 fleet replacement order. Brian Rickert.
As you guys may see, along with the memo, there is an attached Excel spreadsheet. That kind of is a breakdown. I hope you guys all had the opportunity to see that document. Currently, as I work with our operations supervisor and our mechanics, we're working very diligently, we started back in April, to develop a capital improvement plan for our fleet. It's the first time ever that it's been done before. Kind of previously was just, hey, you know, what fleet needs to be replaced? Kind of looked at it as a year-by-year basis. But what it allowed us to do is we also were able to kind of look at that fleet that's just kind of been there, maybe not being used as it should be, you know, made our, made ourselves kind of scratch our heads, saying, why is that even here? If it were to be something that, you know, we may need, is it something that we could rent? So you may notice on our website, Public Surplus, we've been putting up some random stuff that's just been for sale. And it's kind of a rummage sale, making room for, for future fleet, but also making, you know, having an understanding of, you know, we're kind of running out of space. I shouldn't even say kind of. We are running out of space in our public works facilities, so let's make sure we're not storing stuff that we don't need. So kind of the cleaning out your basement kind of scenario. Anyways, back to it, we looked at all of our fleet, and as part of it, we kind of developed a five-year capital improvement plan for just our fleet. During that process, we reached out to various different vendors to determine when ordering windows are open for certain pieces of equipment. Some pieces of equipment are actually out 36 months. So it's really making us go, holy cow, we may need a garbage truck in three years, but unfortunately, we have to order it sooner than that. We have to get our name on it. So with that, we reached out to both li- light-duty and heavy-duty commercial vehicle providers, and then along with the equipment providers. A good thing, a lot of the common construction equipment that you might see, loaders, tractor backhoe, stuff like that, aren't as pushed out as far, which is, is good. When you get to the actual light-duty vehicles, so say F-350 and smaller, and then just regular civilian-style cars, there is a window open right now that you can begin to place orders for Ford, Chevy, and General Motors through Ewald, which is a contractor that was awarded the state bid for state bid pricing for 2024. So in there, you'll see that there is multiple vehicles that kind of fit that criteria. Along with that, you'll see that there is also a 1997 CAT Grader. The current lead time for the chassis, we're looking to potentially replace that with a front-end loader. The lead time for the, for the loader itself is only six months, so not bad. Unfortunately, the wintry equipment that goes on at plow and wing setup is out 12 months. So if we order today, we'll see it next fall. So you'll see that in, in the lead time comments. This is built out all the way to 2025, just because we wanted to make sure we were accounting for everything that, that may need to go out that far, based on where it fell in the capital improvement plan. With that, it does seem like a big lift, a lot of dollars. I do want to draw attention to about $800,000 of that is to our enterprise fund or utilities, sewer water storm, so not necessarily impacting general fund dollars. Some of the money is, of course, is likely going to be spent, about $900,000 of it potentially in 2025. So tonight, what I'm looking for is just more or less to get our names kind of on, on the waiting list, to get in line to get some of the fleet replaced. With that, I'll open it to any questions. If anybody has any interest, I would gladly sit down and meet with each one of you. We can look at any of these pieces of equipment. Unfortunately, we do, we do have plow trucks. You may have seen them last season. We do have two plow trucks that are in, to the point where you can no longer put salt on them, because if you were to tip the box back, the box would actually fall off because the hinges are rotted gone. So we, we put sand in them and then dig the sand out come spring. So I'm hoping to get to the point where we, we don't stretch our legs out that far. It's, it's pretty challenging to me. Looking at some of our fleet, you know, we're putting a, a new box on a truck, then the following year, we're putting turbo and injectors in it, and here we got almost $60,000 stuck into a $30,000 truck. And then we feel the need to continue to keep it. So I want to try to get us, you know, in a little bit more of a positive swing, rather than having the, the expensive fleet repairs and waiting to get, you know, ultimately, you know, the, the parts aren't readily available for a lot of this old equipment. So sometimes it sits for three to four weeks waiting for parts. So just kind of getting a little bit more of a refresh on, on some of our fleet. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions, and definitely I'd be more than willing to show any one of you, any of our fleet, give you kind of a tour of what, kind of our deck of cards, what we're dealing with.
Let me just add one thing on here as well. So when you look at these numbers, keep in mind, our, we have a, we're self-funded on our, our vehicle purchases. So this is not going to be $1.8 million cash out the door tomorrow, nor it'll be cash out the door over a period of time, number one. The fund that we use is for, that's, that's the trick right now is managing this. The unknown of when is that invoice now going to come? Because they said it's 12 months, and all of a sudden, it's 15, or maybe it's 10. So we're managing the cash flow with this as well. So we, we're okay from a cash flow perspective over the time, but we do charge back the general fund over the life of the asset. So if, for example, the, the first vehicle, the dump truck, is a 10-year life, well, that'll be a $9,000 expense to the, each year for the next 10 years. So that's how we, that's how we expense these. Cash obviously is out the door at the invoice time, but it, we are working together on the timing of all those cash, cash outflows, just so you're aware.
You know, I, I have to say, because I've said this a lot of times, when I first became the president, I was pretty upset that we had a pickup truck that had a stop sign for a floorboard. And, you know, part of that is, you know, we have awesome mechanics in the back garage that can keep things running, but, you know, the bodies just kind of fall off of them. And, you know, this one right here is a 1997. That, that's 26 years old. That's almost as old as me. So, you know, I, and I mean, every, every community that I, that I talk with, they're all sitting in the same position of, you, you order something today and you don't, you're not going to get it till February of 2025. So, you know, we all have to kind of predict, look in the magic wand, so.
I think we went through that. A couple of years ago, we needed some vehicles, and the time lag was so bad that we had to go in a different direction. But I think basically what you're saying, you want to, $1.8 million for the next two years put into your budget for vehicles, kind of simple. And that would bring the fleet up to date, in your opinion, then, Brian?
Correct. Yeah, so that's, I do want to touch on, this is, this is the bulk of, we'll say, the heavy lifting. There is a few small items that'll be sprinkled in that do have shorter lead times. But this is the items that are, are, you know, that, that have that longer lead time. The ones that aren't so time pressing, I'm going to, obviously, we'll talk about those when we do have the five-year CIP, and you can kind of see the whole plan a, as a whole. I just know that the items that you see here, I mean, the, this is the bulk of it, but there, there will be potentially a few other minor items that, you know, will, will be built into the capital improvement plan. And you guys will, will, as part of that process, you'll be able to see our, our long-term five-year plan for all of our fleet. And, yeah.
I have a question on the grader, the 1997 grader, being replaced by a front-end loader.
Correct.
Do we have another grader? Are there any services we're going to lose by replacing a grader with a front-end loader?
Very good question. So we do have two graders. We would still be keeping one. It's my understanding that back in the day, we actually used to use our graders in, in the summer for road grading, you know, and actually, you know, building roads. Unfortunately, now with the grader, our, our graders spend majority of the summer sitting, because we really don't have a need for them. You know, occasionally, we can use them for shouldering and stuff like that, but we don't have much for gravel roads or, you know, rural cross-section roads where we'd use a grader. So a vast majority of the, the summer, they spend sitting, which of course, you know, we, we do get them out and try to exercise them every couple of months to make sure that, you know, seals don't dry out and stuff like that. But it's obviously not good for a piece of equipment. A loader is something that we'll be able to use across multiple functions throughout the year. So whether it's rubbish pickup, you know, using it for moving around, you know, yardway, stuff like that, it, it's just a more versatile piece of equipment. But we would still have one grader in our fleet. We're not certain that we, we may always look to keep one grader in our fleet because the benefit they have in the winter is they allow to give a lot of downward force when you're having to, having to scrape off snow and hard pack, snow and ice. But you, you also have to have the right operator because you can also rip out manholes and water valves at the same time. So something that we'll be working on to make sure that we're kind of rightsizing our fleet, but keeping two of them, they, they aren't very agile because they are so long, but they do have a purpose. They definitely do.
We, when I was the parks director here, we used to use the grader. They'd build parks with it at the time. Dave DeBeck was like amazing with the grader. So we used them quite a bit in the summer for that type of work, but I just didn't, I would, didn't think he'd use it that way anymore, but.
I don't think they use them in parks in the summer. Rex, I don't know. Okay, I didn't, didn't think so, but.
That's when they were building them. When they were building them.
Yeah, I know. Dave was amazing. Thank you, Brian.
Not that, I'm not proposing this, any possibility to rent these out?
Grader?
Yeah.
Grader?
Since like you said, they're just sitting there. It's, you know, there's, there might be a need someplace, county, somebody else, that we could rent them out.
Right.
It'd be great to have Greg put more line items in to be able to have more revenue coming in, so.
Right. Grader potentially, especially in that, in that time of, of need. I mean, they are frontline pieces of equipment. You know, they do go out on every snowstorm. The challenging thing with our graders is they do have that wing setup. So a lot of, you know, road builders and contractors, they're not going to have that, that side-mounted frame that supports the wing. I haven't really explored the, the opportunity to see if, you know, if we could just rent one with a, a belly mow board, which is the main plow under it. But it is definitely something that we could explore when we look to replace that, that other grader. The other grader is, is very similar age. And just this last year, I mean, one of our graders was six-wheel drive. We ended up having to tow it back because there is a lot of hydraulic lines that power the front of that grader, and it sat for multiple months trying to get parts and equipment and get it back together, so.
Brian, the only question I got, I don't have any questions on what you need for equipment. I know you, you know what the village needs, and I don't have a problem with that. The only question I'm getting to is, when we do our monthly trash pickup, I find it hard to believe we need such a big front-end loader running around, helping the fellows load equipment. In your second, or your front-end loader that you're looking at, would it be as big as that, as the one we've got now, or could we downsize that and save a little bit, just, just in running time? I mean, that's a big piece of equipment, picking up a couch.
Right. Very, very good question. So the way that we're set up now, the large loader that you see out is the grapple bucket. So there's a bucket that's actually a grapple on the front. It only fits on our largest loader. So essentially, our largest loader, you know, is mainly, I'm assuming when they bought the grapple, they were kind of thinking it'd be more used for moving lumber, trees, stuff like that. Unfortunately, we're picking up couches and stuff. We do have a smaller loader. Unfortunately, we don't have a grapple bucket for it. That smaller loader is something that we will be looking to replace years out. At that point in time, I think it'd be a, a good exercise for us to see if we can get a grapple bucket for it because it would be far more agile. That smaller loader right now is essentially only mainly used for loading salt and doing snow removal around our facilities here. Believe it or not, it's a 1990, 1988 John Deere loader.
Well, you've got a good piece of equipment at John Deere.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's impressive. The heat works and it loads salt, and I guess that's all that we can ask for, for right now. But also kind of with, you know, on borrowed time, but when we prioritize it, we kind of noted that it wasn't necessarily a frontline piece of equipment. You know, if push came to shove, if it were to break down, we could potentially use a tractor backhoe or something like that to load salt. But when we do look to replace that loader, we definitely could look to, you know, get a grapple bucket so we don't have to run, run around with the, I think it's almost a 55, 60,000-pound, you know, loader to pick up a couch, so.
All right, there's no other questions. I'll move to approve the staff to execute contracts with various vendors for the 2024-25 fleet replacement in the amount of $1.82 million.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve staff to execute contracts with various vendors not to exceed $1.82 million. More comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose. Motion carried. Thank you. 10J, consider discuss act on Village of Ashwabanen ordinance number 08-2-23, amending the prohibition of loud and unnecessary noise. Patrick?
The Department of Public Works requests that the village board look at the ordinance regulating the, for the noise ordinance. Right now, basically, the noise ordinance just prohibits all unnecessary, loud, obnoxious noise, et cetera. There aren't a whole lot of exceptions to that. Being in kind of a line with a lot of other municipalities in our area, there are, there are exceptions relating to DPW crews and village staff, utility crews or village contractors, things like that. What this ordinance would propose is making, basically making an exemption that the DPW staff, their crew, machinery, equipment, and its contractors would be exempt from the noise ordinance based on things like an emergency situation or if there is a project that needs to be done at a certain time. So if the project needs to be done at 6:00 in the morning and it's absolutely critical and necessary, DPW would be able, or its contractors would be able to go out and essentially complete the project without being, risking being in violation of the noise ordinance. And again, this is not necessarily a blanket. You can do any kind of work whenever you want. It needs to be reasonable and somewhat of a critical project in order to run, or order for the staff to, to do this work. So for example, like in an emergency, I think I gave in the cover sheet that if a tree fell in the roadway, certainly would be reasonable for DPW crew to get out and get its equipment out and, and remove, remove the tree, so to speak. So currently under our ordinance, I don't know if that necessarily would apply to that, but also in the event of maybe there's some kind of a, a street construction project going on, needs to be taking place at 6:00 AM. This would allow that DPW crew or its contractors go and complete that without risking the noise ordinance violation. So yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Brian and I discussed it a lot as well, so more specifics, questions can be asked to him. Otherwise, I would ask the board to follow the PNW recommendation of approving the amended ordinance.
The one question I would have is on contractors for the village. If our DPW would have control over that, so they wouldn't be saying, oh, we need to come in at 6:00 AM just because it's more convenient for them.
Yep, exactly.
But Brian would be the one saying, yes, you can, or no, you cannot?
Correct. Only when it's like, yeah, only when it's critical or necessary. So Brian and everybody else would give the okay, saying, all right, based on this type of project, you absolutely, it is essential for you to, your crew to come and do this work at this time, right? Only, you know, we don't want to be here at, at 4:00 in the morning just because it's more convenient.
Right.
Correct.
The one thing that I would touch on that would be, you know, close to that, say water main break. Ultimately, you know, I, I don't think people would want to wait for us until 7:00 to start that. They would rather take their shower at 7:00. So, you know, things like that. Or another good example is that, I know we've done some pond dredging, de-watering a pond. Well, a lot of times, we'll use pumps, you know, submersible pumps that don't make a lot of noise, but they'll plug them into a whisper watt generator. So a generator that makes white noise, but you do have to run them 24/7 in order to de-water a pond. Another example of Another example of this would be out on Morris when we were re-laying the sanitary sewer. The sewer flows all day, all night, generally not as much at night, but we have to bypass that sewer so that way we can continue to lay pipe. So, they did have to set up bypass pumps and had generators that ran throughout the night. But it's a very white noise, but I do want to make sure that we're kind of covered, so we're not kind of going against what we have written in our current ordinance.
And like I said, there is a lot of other municipalities that have very similar ordinances like this.
I think it's all good. The only thing I would be asking, Brian, is for, I mean, emergencies, you got to do it, you got to do it. If it's a planned activity, can we get notice out to the area where the noise might be, a written communication? I realize, you know, not even a quarter of the people are going to read it, but at least then, you know, get out a written communication that, hey, due to it, because what's going to happen is some things are going to be more critical. You might have to do them nighttime hours because of traffic or whatever. You can't stop traffic. I get that. That's the case. If we could just notify those people in that area that that's going to be coming, it just saves phone calls, stuff like that. That would be the only thing I would ask.
I would agree with that 100%. Yeah, we'll do that. And then we also generally have a public information meeting
Right.
for a project like that. If you can get ahead of it, a lot of times the emails and phone calls are a little bit less on my end, so if we, I like to get ahead of stuff like that.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, social media usually works against you if you don't get ahead of it, so.
So, am I right in kind of grasping or understanding, I know it's pretty simple, that really nothing is changing? In fact, nothing changing really going forward, how are you going to operate things? It's just that somebody can't come back to us and say, hey, you're violating the code.
Correct. It, you know, it's mainly saying, hey, we can plow snow at 3:00 AM.
Yeah.
So, that way, when people want to go to work at 6:00, the snow is out of sight, so.
Okay.
Nothing, no, looking for no major changes, no, no changes at all that I'm aware of in our operations. It's more just, you know, some cleanup.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 08-2-23, amending the prohibition of loud and unnecessary noise.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 08-2-23. Any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, could we include motorcycle noise?
No.
Yeah, Brian, get on that.
Funny hearing. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed.
And Gary, I would add to that, the, the remote car door locks that people at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning are, I got a neighbor every night.
That gets my dog barking. My son's dog gets with us right now.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. 10K, action on committee appointment for Police and Fire Commission. One of our people who's been on the Police and Fire for a while now, Randy Schultz, has moved into Hobart. So, he can no longer be on our Police and Fire Commission. So, I would like to appoint Sue Bischel to our Police and Fire Commission. So, I'm looking for approval of that appointment.
Can you tell a little bit about her? The name sounds familiar, but I just can't.
Yes, I, if anybody wants to see the app, I do have it in the office.
No, I was just wondering, that sound familiar?
Yes. So.
A move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the appointment of Sue Bischel to the Police and Fire Commission. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, 10L, community-centered fire alarm and security panel upgrade. Joel.
David's going to be so happy.
Thank you.
Rex is going to be so.
Rex and David are going to be happy. If you're not aware, the community center has a fire alarm and security panel that is combined over the past probably 12 or 18 months-ish, maybe a little bit longer than that. The fire panel has been identifying kind of a false alarm within the center. So, at any given time, whether you're there for a chair yoga class taught by Rex or, or any other activity, tax, we have ARPA tax collection services and things like that. The fire alarm will just randomly go off, and it will go off again and again and again. Unfortunately, the panel itself is combined with the security system. Back at the time of construction, that was allowable under the building code. That is no longer the case. You have to have those two panels separated. In addition to that, one of the challenges we're facing is that the fire panel is a proprietary EST system, meaning only one vendor can actually service it. We do struggle from time to time with that particular vendor as far as having timely repair or response to that. And it's really quite gotten to the point where we, we cannot function our programs effectively by having the alarm go off as routinely, routinely as it does. In addition to that, up until recently, Rex and David would get called at, at any hours of the night to come to the community center to verify and validate that it was a false alarm because it would sound the alarm and issue the monitoring. So, this is a non-budgeted item. It did go to Finance and Personnel, which they recommended approval. This would be to replace the fire panel and some of the ancillary pieces of equipment that tie into it, sensors, things of that nature. That would effectively remove, basically replace it with a non-proprietary system, which would allow us to work with other vendors to maintain the system as we see fit. And then it should be noted that the security panel would get upgraded in 2024. That's not so much an issue immediately because it's the fire panel that's sounding the alarm so frequently. But ultimately, we do need to replace both units sooner rather than later. So, with that, we are seeking a non-budgeted purchase. This would come out of our building maintenance fund, so dollars are available for this particular work. It just wasn't simply budgeted financially within 2023's fiscal period. Again, committee recommended approval, and staff is seeking your support.
Joel, are they going to do that on a reasonable time? You were kind of mentioning a time period on this.
Yeah, there is some lead time on some of the panels, my understanding, and that's one of the, the important notes. There is getting, getting it ordered so that we have an appropriate lead time. If we wait another, let's say, four, or five, six months before the budget's adopted and we enter into the next fiscal period, it could be several more months, so we just want to kind of get ahead of it. So, I anticipate we have a six-to-12-month lead time before it's installed and, and put in.
All right, so this is kind of a must deal, so I'm over to approve the recommendation.
A second. We have a motion and a second to recommend to approve the Quote from Martin Systems to upgrade the fire alarm system in the amount of $24,696.66. Any other comments?
Yeah, Joel, did I hear you a little bit ago saying that this would allow us to be able to use another party to do it? Currently, we can't.
Correct.
Because it doesn't sound near totally happy with the current vendor, am I?
Correct.
Okay.
So, it's going to take six months to a year even to get the system in if we approve it now?
Correct.
So, are Rex and David going to be going insane by the time we get the new system in?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Or is there something, you going to shut it down or something?
No, there's a easy patch right now. They've basically disconnected a wire, a couple wires, which isn't the best thing to do, but it's, it's keeping us from having the alarm constantly going off 20, 30, 40, literally 20, 30, 40 times a day. Well, yeah, it was, it was to that point.
Okay, good.
And this, this happened on Election Day too, later in the day, but yeah, on Election Day.
Which means it's no longer a alarm because nobody pays any attention to it anymore.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10M, consider discuss act on draft operator license approval policy. Joel.
Okay, in your packet is the draft operator license approval policy. This was prepared with staff, staff's consideration. So, Patrick, Chris, Chief Yule, myself, sat down and reviewed this policy. This was presented to committee this last month with a recommendation for approval. Unless desired, I won't prepare a 12-minute presentation on the policy. But what I will say is that ultimately, what this will do is more or less in written form, identify what we currently do. And then really where this is going to aid the village, both from a staff perspective as well as committee and board, is clarify the decisions that are ultimately made through, through the, through the approval process or the grievance process of a denied operator license. So, all the things and activities that you see staff performing are what we currently do. They're just more or less in written form. If an operator is denied a license, that denial is an administrative procedure that staff has been delegated the authority to, to have. And that was through both statutory language within Chapter 125 as well as within municipal code. Now, if an operator comes before the committee or before the board, usually both, obviously, they are appealing an administrative decision. And so, what was the basis of that appeal? And what this policy does is identify what that basis would be. So, there are specific criteria in which we would deny a license for, and so it would be identified in the policy. That applicant would then come before both committee and board and appeal that decision. At that point, the board and the committee are acting in a quasi-judicial manner. So, now you're kind of reviewing it based on the merit of facts, right? So, they're, they're presenting to you why they feel that there are mitigating circumstances or rehabilitative-type things that negates the record in which they were, that the denial was based upon. And so, you're here really just to listen to the evidence that the applicant is, is presenting. Certainly, us as staff have to present to you the evidence in which we use to base our decision, decision, but you're basing it on the evidence and not so much an appeal by the individual that's being presented to you, right? So, think about some of the operators that we've had in the past. They kind of come in and say, well, I'm fully rehabilitated. Okay, how, where, what, what things took place in order to meet the requirements of rehabilitation, right? And then oftentimes, we hear, well, what, what criteria was used to determine the denial, the original denial? And so, with having this in written form, we could simply say they did not meet guideline number two or guideline number three. And based on their record, this, this is, this evidence is presented and given to you for that confirmation. And so, it just kind of, really kind of cleans that up, and it gives you a more objective method in which to hear and determine whether or not the appeal should be granted or denied. Again, this was reviewed by committee and recommended for approval, and I will answer any questions that you may have.
I think what you've done, Joel, there is saved a lot of questions that we get on Public Works and Protection. You get these people coming in and they, they have all kinds of excuses, and we, we've been through a lot of them already. I think that's going to clean that up and make it much more simpler when they, if they do come in front of the Public Works and Protection to take, take, make it small, cut the time down. We're jumping around the circle. We're going no place with it, so this will take away that part of it, so. But no other questions. I'll move to adopt the operating license approval policy as presented.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the draft operator license approval policy. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10N, consider discuss act on draft social media policy and guidelines. Joel.
Okay, again, this policy was drafted with the assistance of staff. So, our attorney, Patrick Legal, myself, Haley Youngren, our multimedia communications specialist, Jeremy Miller, our IT or network administrator, and then Greg Windholtz assisted in review of this particular policy. This policy idea was born actually about three years ago when I started. It was a directive that I think some of you had for me in drafting a social media use policy for both staff, village accounts, and possibly elected officials. And this was also included in our strategic plan. Again, not going to go through the policy word by word. I trust that you've had an opportunity to review it, and we'll certainly ask any questions that you may have. I think the key thing that I'll point out is that this policy is really derived to ensure that individuals that are using what we will call village-sponsored or supported pages are doing so in a very appropriate manner for representation purposes of the village. In addition to that, it is geared towards staff members that have personal social media accounts, not so much, and in no way restricting their ability to utilize their First Amendment free speech rights, but if they're acting on behalf of the village or posing in, as a reflection of the village, that could be problematic for our organization. And so, this policy addresses those concerns. So, oftentimes, the public may, let's just use, I'll use myself as an example. If I had a Facebook page and I represented myself as Joel, the village manager of Ashwabanon, and I commented on things on social media, and those comments were not reflective of the organization, that would create a problem for me as a staff member that would be deemed inappropriate. So, this policy addresses that issue. It also addresses concerns as it relates to the restriction of First Amendment speech rights for other users. So, making sure that we're not blocking or rescinding ability to post comments. Even though those comments may, may be deemed negative, they wouldn't necessarily constitute a reason to ban or to hide that, that information. And then there's also an appendices within the packet that gives advice to the elected and appointed officials that may use social media sites for official village purposes. We don't see that a whole lot in Ashwabanon, but in other communities you may, where let's say a trustee or a member of a particular committee, let's say Plan Commission says, I'm going to open a social media account and I'm going to be, you know, John Doe, trustees, wards, 15, 16, and here I'm going to interact with my constituents. This policy addresses issues as it relates to records retention and First Amendment speech rights. So, I think we tried to encompass all the possible scenarios that, that we could think of. And certainly, you know, potentially tomorrow, it'll be outdated because social media moves at a very rapid pace. But today, I feel confident that we, we're able to address the majority of issues we've seen with the utilization of social media. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Joel, did we have something in the personnel manual in regard to this too, didn't we?
We do, correct.
Maybe less extensive, but do they mesh pretty, obviously, you guys looked at both and.
Correct. The, the social media use policy is really geared towards, you know, like, what is appropriate at-work type usage? If, again, if you are representing the village in any way, shape, or form through personal social media accounts, it could have a reflection on your employment status. So, yes, they do, they do align together.
Then it's already dated because you have Twitter on there. Isn't that X now?
Yes.
Change to X?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I should change that to X.
You should change it to X, yeah.
When we discussed this the other day at staff, I was saying that this is a big deal when I go to the different conferences that I go to. There's communities out there that have a lot of issues with people running because they're against a specific thing or for a specific thing, and they're putting it all on their social media accounts, and, and they're getting in a lot of trouble. So, I'm glad we got to this.
Leak have something that they had for a while back that would help to formulate this? Do I remember that? Or did you guys come up with this yourself, or did you get some guidance from them, or?
The Leak had some commentary, I think, in one of their past newsletters. In all fairness, Patrick assisted in this. I think he drafted a similar policy in another community that I worked in. So, it was a good policy, so we ran with it.
Don't blame me if it's bad, Joel.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt the social media policy and guidelines as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the draft social media policy and guidelines. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you.
So, one comment I'd like to make is, discuss this before and probably with the rollout of the new website, it'd be good to incorporate, to educate the residents on all the different social media platforms and that, that we are pushing information on.
Certainly.
Okay, 10O, consider discuss act on Village of Ashwabnan Resolution Number R8-1-23, releasing the public utility easement located at 2305 San Louis Place. Patrick.
So, the village is currently in the process of a sale of the San Louis property. During the title search of the, of the property itself, there was an easement that was found in 1974 that was recorded. The easement was for kind of a drainage and power and telecoms serving between the two, excuse me, between the two parcels of San Louis and the property adjacent to it. Since San Louis has been developed over time, the easement really doesn't serve its purpose anymore, and there are no. anymore, and there are no utilities that exist in the easement, so the potential purchaser, the buyer's engineer verified that, and now our DPW staff, our DPW director, as well as our village engineer, also confirmed that. There's a Digger's Hotline request that was sent out and also confirmed that no utilities exist in the, in the easement. So basically, it's just kind of irrelevant that it's there, and since the overall goal of the property is to demolish the existing building and then possibly build where the easement would take place, there's a request to release this easement and then record that with the Register of Deeds and then essentially clean up the title a little bit in order to develop where that easement would take place. So again, this is just kind of a formal policy, a formal procedure to release this easement by resolution and then recording it with the Register of Deeds office. So I would request that the resolution be approved and happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, R8-1-23, releasing public utility easement located at 2305 San Luis Place.
Second.
Under discussion?
Yep.
It's hard to see on my maps, may I if you can just clarify, is it the red hashed area that goes from east, west to east, and then does it continue the utility easement on also the east end of the property going north and south, or is that not part of it, that north-south piece?
Yeah, that is not part of it. I know I'm looking at the exhibit A right now, it might be a little unclear, but yes, you're right, Tracy, where that number 14 is right on the exhibit A, that is the easement in question.
Okay, so it's the one that runs east-west only, it's not that north-south one that goes back up to Quormmere?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's actually WPS easement.
Okay, so that one will remain, just the one that kind of goes through the property? Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R8-1-23, releasing public utility easement located at 2305 San Luis Place. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Items for next agenda? If anybody has anything, give staff a call. We'll get it on the next agenda. Number 12, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabnon may convene into closed session pursuant to, A, Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, parent 1, parent E, to consider discuss act on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding the San Luis Development Agreement and Pilot Agreement. For property located at 2305 San Luis Place, tax parcel VA-99-5, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, parent 2, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. Need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to enter closed session.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie?
Yes.
Okay, we are in closed session, we'll go into A, we'll.